...meeting of the Stafford County Board of Supervisors is called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Bomke.
Here.
Mr. Cavalier.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Dudenheffer. Mrs. Mauer.
Here.
Ms. Shelton.
Here.
And Mr. Snellings.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Thank you and good afternoon. My name is Meg Bomke. I represent the Falmouth District and I'm the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. On behalf of the Board in Stafford County, I'd first like to congratulate Daniel Richard on being selected Teacher of the Year by The Washington Post. This is a huge honor with lots of worthy competition. Mr. Richard was selected from many talented teachers in the DC area. He's a fifth grade teacher at Kate Waller Barrett Elementary, which isn't far from here, up off of 610. And he has really gone out of his way of connecting visually with all of his students. We're proud of him, as well as Mike Sidebotham of Grafton Village Elementary, who was a finalist for Principal of the Year. With that, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? I don't believe so. May I have a motion and a second to approve the regular agenda?
So move.
Second.
Okay, cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes six with one not present. So I would like to say that Mr. Dudenheffer had a trip that was planned long before he won his election in November, and so he is out of town actually and will not be with us today. Thank you. Now we have the presentation of the GFOA Award, so I'm going to turn it over to... Oh.
Madam Chair, we wanted to be sure that all the staff that were involved in this were here for this presentation. If we could skip to the next item on the agenda and then come right back to that?
Okay, not a problem. Thank you. We want everybody to be here. Let's see here. We are now going to Presentations by the Public. So I have one speaker card. If you would like to make a comment, please remain courteous and respectful to the audience and to board members. It's also important for you to keep track of your time at the podium. The Board would like to give all interested individuals a chance to speak, so we ask that you stay on schedule to ensure that everyone will have enough time to address the Board. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the Board. If you are here to speak about one of the scheduled public hearings, please refrain from making those comments until the appropriate time during this evening session, which begins at 7:00 PM. Speak into the microphone slowly, clearly, and loudly. Begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light on the podium to monitor the time of your presentation. Green indicates the start of your presentation. Yellow indicates that you have one minute to summarize your comments, and red obviously indicates that your presentation time is complete. Okay, so with that, we have two speaker cards. The first one is Mr. Gregory Gavin.
Hi, my name is Gregory Gavin, 242 Stony Hill Road in Hartwood. Dear members, I was enjoying Stafford County's newest park, Lake Mooney. Over the winter time, Stafford County Parks and Recreation has done a wonderful job in the area, adding to the vibrancy of our outdoor community. I look forward to enjoying fishing and hiking at the park this season. First slide, please.
Computer, please.
While hiking down to the Rappahannock River from the Lake Mooney parking lot, I noticed that numerous trails lead down to the highly desirable and coveted Rappahannock Whitewater access. Next slide, please. Is it feasible to construct a modest canoe launch on the Rappahannock River behind Lake Mooney Dam? I mentioned it to former Stafford Board Supervisor Paul Millday two years ago, and he thought it was a great idea. Please consider the subject and the positive impact that it would have on our community, such as recreation. Next slide, please. Put quite simply, Stafford County borders Rappahannock for over 20 miles. It offers tremendous beauty, history, and ancient walking trails, and a robust whitewater recreation. Sadly, we in Stafford have no access to the rushing water. To access the whitewater, we have to take our canoes and leave the county. It's a little absurd. One option is to drive over 20 miles, if you look on the TV up there, to Kelly's Ford in Remington. The well-known 29-mile trip requires an overnight stay with full camping gear and a day and a half's worth of food. Second option requires using a few limited private landings on the other side of the river in Spotsylvania Culpeper. That's a very difficult proposition for our Stafford residents, as it requires a lot of driving. A new canoe launch would make two exceptional trips, one from Kelly's Ford in Remington to Lake Mooney, and a second from Lake Mooney downriver to Falmouth Park in the city of Fredericksburg. What a great way to connect our county from west to east. Next slide, please. Safety would be another reason. The Rappahannock River, because of its limited access, is extremely difficult to control and difficult to complete emergency rescue operations. A new canoe launch would provide excellent emergency services for Stafford and a superb training area. Third, promoting kayak or canoe industry, we need to promote and spur eco-friendly businesses in our community. If we build it, they will come. The National Canoe Association is located here for good reason. The Rappahannock River, with its pristine beauty, is a jewel, but it remains untapped for us. Next slide, please. Let's untap this jewel for the residents of Stafford County as soon as possible. Let's start enjoying whitewater canoeing firsthand. Please consider feasibility study on designing and building and financing a new canoe launch on the Rappahannock River near the Lake Mooney Egress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Now, Mr. Clark Lemming.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the Board. I'm Clark Lemming. I'm going to speak for just a few moments, my three minutes, on item 18 on your agenda. This is the revocation of the special use permit at 24 Derrick Lane. I had assumed that there would be nothing to say today, but there's been some activity recently, and I want to tell you what has happened and what has not happened. First, the owner of the property, Mr. Atai, heard you very clearly last fall when you said, "Get your act cleaned up." He evicted the tenant that was there and causing the issues, parking other cars across the street. He evicted him completely. He had not received notice of the underlying violation that was the basis for the revocation at that time. And I brought all that to the attention of Ms. Blackburn and to the county attorney. And you continued it until this date. There's been no activity. There's been no car sales on the property until this past February. The owner is a partner in the current operation there. What has happened is that there was an allegation that there were cars parked too closely to Derrick Lane. There is a condition, number three, that says, supposed to be a 10-foot setback from the right-of-way. It's a 1981 condition. We'll come back to that in a moment. Now, the cars were moved back. The staff came out and verified that. Here are the problems with that. They were moved back, I think technically, under protest, because in 2013, the same issue came up, and Mr. Atai went to work with Ms. Blackburn and constructed a fence along Derrick Lane, a white fence that is there now. On the inside of the fence, the spaces were striped immediately, on the other side of the fence, exactly where they are right now. And that's where parking has occurred, not just since that time, but going back much further than that time. But they've been moved. Now, the other issue is that this condition is a 1981 condition and has to be read in that context. In 1981, and I've provided documentation to Ms. Blackburn and Ms. McLennan regarding the status of that road at that time. This was a dirt-and-gravel road in 1981 that had, according to the Director of Public Works in the letter that I obtained from VDOT, had 24 trips per day. That's all there was. It's a prescriptive easement. There is no right-of-way, per se, in any conventional sense. So it is my contention that that condition has to do with the setback from Route 1 and not from Derrick Lane at all, because Derrick Lane didn't exist as it does now. Now, did the condition evolve? You know, did it become something different than it was in 1981? I don't think that can happen. So Mr. Atai is here. He can further answer any questions. There have been various allegations about tractor-trailers unloading cars. None of that has happened. There is no documentation of that. Staff has indicated that's the case. I know my time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll be happy to answer any other questions you might have when you get to that item.
Okay, would anyone else like to address the Board?
Hello, I am Darlene Pack. I reside at 35 Derrick Lane. Mr. Lemming is right. You guys gave them a six-month trial occupational period to operate without any violations, and there were any cars being parked there till February 15th. And as of February 24th, we had our first test drive down Derrick Lane, which I had spoken to Mr. Prosser, who said he was going to be there every single day. He would be with people who were test-driving. There would be no test drives down Derrick Lane, and he even put a sign up. That has not happened, so we are still having issues with people that were speeding down our street. The right-turn sign is missing coming out of that lot, which is supposed to alleviate some of the problems. There was an employee on March 29 taking pictures of a car for posting for sale, and it was partway in the road and partway on the lot. Tow truck parked in the road. Let's see. Let's see. Yeah, on 3/29, our neighbor stopped a Mercedes being test-driven and was speeding from our call to sack. This makes a dangerous situation for all residents on Derrick Lane. We have stood in front of the Board of Supervisors twice, planning zoning once. Now, for the third time, Board of Supervisors. Six-month trial period has only been tested for a part of the February until now. That's not an operational six months for the current car lot. The above incidences stated to me show that the owner has no sense of responsibility for what happens on this lot. He was an absentee landlord with Premier Auto. The test drivers apparently are not told to not drive down Derrick Lane. They are not directed that way. And we really don't feel that's an unreasonable request. So let me see. I'm wondering if any of the employees or customers are informed of that situation. If you still allow this to continue, then it is only fair that Derrick Lane residents do not have to start from the beginning, and we need to have some sort of avenue on Derrick Lane residents to resolve the situation. But I have to say that this has gone on too long, and I support recommending the revoking of the owner's S U P of this lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board?
Good afternoon, members of the Board. My name is Sharon Goodchild. I live at 45 Derrick Lane, Stafford, Virginia. I support the revocation of S U P 80-11, which is on the agenda this afternoon. The longest period that a car dealership was able to stay in compliance was when it was vacant from the end of October through mid-February 2018. Whether the current dealer lease return center is an agent of the landowner, a renter on the property, or the new property owner, they are still subject to the 60-month probationary period. The S U P was issued when Derrick Lane was a dirt road. I won't disagree with Mr. Lemming on that. It is also the current S U P or C U P that is governing how this is operated, so is in effect. So whether it states that it was 10 feet from a dirt road or 10 feet from a paved road, that road has existed as a route in Stafford County all this time, and isn't necessarily only applied to Route 1. At the time it was put in effect that it was a dirt road with only a few homes, the lot's size in this location in 2018 will continue to be a problem staying in compliance without constant monitoring, and the diligent documentation by our community, complete with time and date stamps, again. It is a situation of, I go by your rules when you're around, but when you're not, I go by my own. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board?
Good afternoon. I'm Sylvie Pendleton. I'm at 57 Derrick Lane. And I agree with all my neighbors, you guys have already heard most of this stuff going on, but I can actually give you dates and times of things that have happened since the car lot has reopened, and I was witness to everything. We've got the February 24th at 145, which was the BMW speeding down the road. And I understand, too, that a car driving down the road is not really my issue when it comes to anything. It has nothing... It's a public road. You can drive down a public road. It's the going down doing maybe 35 miles an hour, getting down to the bottom, blowing the UEs, spinning tires, and then gunning it and leaving. By the time they hit my driveway, they're doing about 45, 50 miles an hour. That's the issue. Then on, let's see, March 12th at 4:30 CC Towing, which is a towing company with the flatbed that it could probably fit, I don't know, maybe four or five cars on. It's not an 18-wheeler. It's a duly kind of pickup truck, parked in the road, blocked, got pictures of that. And I already sent them to somebody here on the Board. And then on 3/17, there was a blue SUV with no tags on it parked in the road, blocking. I don't know what they were doing. There was nobody around. Also have pictures of that. And then on the 31st at 12:45, the black Mercedes. Now, this particular person, I actually stopped. I actually got to the bottom of the driveway, blocked the road, and stopped them. And I spoke to the lady that was driving. There was a lady and a gentleman in the car. She was driving. Informed her that the speeding up the road, because she was test-driving, which we all do it, we test drove cars before, that test-driving vehicles was not permitted, that the speeding, it is 25 miles an hour, and of course, that's her responsibility, not necessarily the dealership. Understand that, too. And she informed me that nobody told her anything at the dealership about coming down the road, because I specifically asked her, weren't you informed that, you know, you should probably take Route 1 to test-drive the vehicle or anything like that? And there was nobody from the dealership in the vehicle, which is something that they had said was going to happen in the future with test-driving. So there was a gentleman. He didn't say anything, but he was not somebody from the dealership. So those are the incidents that I saw, other than periodically you could see a test driver go down, but they were not doing anything wrong, per se, like speeding or anything like that. So we have witnessed all of these things. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board? Please come on down.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Bob Goodchild. I'm at 45 Derrick Lane. I wasn't going to speak today, but Mr. Lemming prompted me. He made a contention that he thought that the requirement to be 10 feet off of the right-of-way was not because of Derrick Lane. No, I disagree. If anyone has looked at the geographics out there, you couldn't possibly park within 10 feet of Route 1. So I believe it was specifically for Derrick Lane. It was specifically to prevent people from blocking or interrupting the travel on Derrick Lane. Even though there's only 24 cars in 1981, there's a few more now. And the Board, and I think it's good judgment, set it up so that they had to, whatever lane, they had to stay 10 feet off of it. It's not just a matter of when people are there. When they're not there, people still come and stop and want to see the cars. Where do they leave their car? They park it in the middle of Derrick Lane, or they were. Now, with 10 feet off, they can get the car off the roadway. That makes it safe. And if you also know the geographics of that road, to sometimes try to get from Route 1 on the Derrick Lane, you have to sort of punch it to go through the traffic, right? Well, if you're coming down Derrick Lane and you hit it 35 miles an hour, and there's a car parked right there, which you didn't see, we're looking at having a serious problem. Unfortunately, if you allow them to park as close they were before, it's the wrong business in the wrong place. I'm not against business, but I'm against the wrong business. And it's the county's responsibility to make sure that we have put the right things in the right places. That's what we're doing here. And unfortunately, because of the way the county has changed, what was okay in 1981 may no longer be okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the Board chambers like to speak?
Afternoon. My name is Maurice. I'm actually a resident of the district, but I'm actually a partner and the general manager of the new dealership.
Okay, could you please state your address, please, for the record?
Sure. It's 1100 First Street, Southeast, Washington DC 20003, Navy Yard.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. I can't speak on what the last dealership did or what practices they did. I can only speak on what we've done moving forward. I am a new person in the building. We have moved all the inventory 10 feet back from the road. Just witnessing, coming from the district, watching Derrick Lane, there was a lot of people who come down Route 1, and they get confused that Derrick Lane is actually the entrance into the shopping center. All day long, I see people making U-turns, constantly making U-turns on Derrick Lane. I've actually had to block the dealership a little bit, because they would come into the dealership to make U-turns. So I think a lot of the cars that may go down Derrick Lane, not for us, I don't think a lot of those are test-drives. There can definitely be people who are making the wrong turn, and they're making a U-turn, not understanding that Derrick Lane is actually a dead-end street. I do inform all the customers to make an immediate left to go out in Route 1 for test drives. We don't have any inventory loading off on Derrick Lane. They're all loaded in our Whipbridge store. Then the cars are brought down, driven down from there. Even moving the cars 10 feet back from the road, that road is actually very narrow. I see two cars try to pass each other, one goes into the ditch. So it's really tough. So even moving the cars 10 feet back from that road, it still makes it hard for other cars to even pass each other, even if we weren't there at all. The road is not paved at all. There's no markings on it. It's really tough to understand that. But like I spoke to a few, I don't see them here, but I spoke to a few of the residents that live on Derrick Lane. I introduced myself. I gave them my personal cellphone number. I told them that whatever the dealership did before, we are not in that business of doing that. That's not our policies. That's not our practice. We don't drag race. This is our business. This is our livelihood. So we're not jeopardized that by drag racing a car. When you've been in this business long enough, you get to know that cars are Dahmer-duzz, and nothing excites you anymore. Someone shows me they got a new car, it's like, oh, I have like 12 of those on my lot. But to assure you again, that we have everything in place to make sure that the things that happened before are not going to happen with us. And like I said, it looks like we're kind of being penalized a little bit from what the last dealership did. I do know they got evicted. We came in, we renovated the building, we changed the inventory. We've cut the inventory in half, so the amount of cars that they had, we have half of those. I think they had about 120 cars in the lot. We have about maybe 50, 55 cars in the lot. So we just don't have those same issues that the other store have. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Would anyone else like to speak to the Board? Okay, with that then, I'll bring it back to the Board, and I think we'll go back to our presentation by Budget and Finance. No, we've got to, we're going back to their presentation. So again, this year, I'm happy to report that the county's Budget Office is the recipient of the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. I have a certificate of recognition to present to Andrea Light... Carrie, would you like to present? So Mr. Snellings is going to present that. With his, yeah. So Andrea Light, and Kim Herman, and Donna Olson in our Budget Office, and to Maria Parat, the county's Chief Financial Officer. But let me tell you what this award is about. It represents a significant achievement, and it reflects the commitment of the county and staff to meeting the highest principles of government budgeting. In order to receive this budget award, staff had to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation, including presenting a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four categories and in the 14 mandatory criteria within those categories. And I know you all have received this award many years in advance. What's our cumulative total now? Do you know? 31 years. Wow, okay. That speaks volumes. So thank you, ladies, for an unbelievable, great accomplishment again this year and for 31 years of receiving the GFOA Award.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I wore my new jacket just for you.[1478.74][1478.74](Laughter). Because I knew I'd be up here today with you. I tell you, the seven of us up here, we get elected, but we're not really experts in a lot of things. We know this, we know that, but we rely on staff. And I can tell you, one of the most important parts of this staff is the finances. And when I go to bed at night, I am resting assured that our finances are in order because of these folks. 31 years is just unbelievable. So congratulations from all of us.
So I just did want to say that this is a result of a team effort from the finance and our superb budget staff. And the Board and the county administration has provided us a lot of leadership and guidance that we appreciate, and our departments provide a lot of the hard work so that we can do this right.
Thank you. Great team effort there with all of staff in Stafford County. And with that, now we'll move on to Board Member Reports. Mr. Cohen.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Giles. Yes, been a rather busy couple of weeks. I was very happy and honored that they allowed me to do a ride-along with the Berea Company, Engine 12, which was a very interesting, and I really appreciate the hard work that they do. And also, I was allowed to go with Medic M-11, and they were amazing as well. So it's nice to see that the people who get services have such wonderful employees of the county that provide them, and the volunteers provide them great service. I also stopped by the Falmouth Station and learned a great deal of information from Mr. Newton, and I appreciated that. And with the idea of fire and rescue, let me praise the fire and rescue people who helped with the brush fire down in the George Washington District along the CSX lines. Also, the forestry people and citizens. Some of the neighborhood people came out and gave water to the firemen, which was really wonderful. I attended the forum on Medicaid that was about last week. I did a tour of something that the school system is looking at. I, along with several others, endured a hospital 5K, which I was going to make sure that I didn't end up needing the hospital when I was done with it. Also, I attended the Falmouth Elementary School 50th anniversary, and it's really nice to see the tradition that we have in this county, and it was terrific to see pictures of the sheriff when he was in fifth grade. So other than that, I just continue to thank staff and appreciate all we're going through.
Mrs. Mauer.
All righty, well, it was a short couple of weeks as I attended the UNLD Debate Team reunion. I know, went home to my alma mater. It was a very exciting trip, and yes, it was quite the large nerd fest, but made me happy. Before I left, I attended the PRTC meeting. It was a lively discussion on the implications of the gas tax bill. So as the budget continues to move through its process, I think it's going to be quite interesting to see what the gas tax bill, they have raised the floor for the gas tax, which is what hurt us the most when gas prices dropped. And so all of that revenue that we were utilizing for local transportation projects suddenly dried up for us. The state legislature has raised that floor, and hopefully, the money would come back to Stafford, but then they saw fit to go ahead and utilize that excess money and send it to other places such as VRE. The good news is, is that there is a VRE fiscal cliff that we were looking at anyway, and with a potential million-dollar add to our budget in contributions. And so we'll be monitoring this very closely, how that impacts our contributions to VRE and whether or not we can go back to funding some of our transportation projects. Also had a finance and budget meeting today. We're continuing to go through the budgeting process. I want to thank staff. That award is well-deserved. You guys have done a yeoman's work on the budget and providing additional details, and the number of budget work sessions that we have had, it's greatly appreciated, in addition to not only understanding our budgets, but all of the budgets of the departments, to include the school division. And so you guys have done an incredible job, and I want to thank you for all of your hard work. In addition to that, we're going to get the third-quarter financial review today. Revenues are looking good, and expenses are also looking good, in the fact, with the exception of CSA. And so we continue to face that challenge on the private-day school here in Stafford County, and that is... County. And that is all I have for today, with the exception of Mr. Snellings. I am loving the jacket.
Ms. Shelton.
I think I'll defer.
Oh, she deferred?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Snellings.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just a couple of quick things. Mr. Gavin was up here earlier, and I just want to commend him for doing a lot of work up in Hartwood, getting roads cleaned up. And he mentioned to me that our board, under the direction of Lisa Butler, picked up over 700 signs last weekend, and I think that's really great. The other thing I'd like to ask the county administrator to do, to look into putting a canoe launch on the Rappahannock at Lake Moonee. I know the county does not own that property. I believe that's city property. So I don't know if it's feasible, but could you look into that? Thank you.
Mr. Cavalier.
First, I'd like to report on the Public Safety Committee meeting that we held today. One of the main topics of conversation that's still in, very topical here today is school security and the task force that the sheriff has formed to look into measures to, to make our schools more safe. But SROs in particular, those are the school resource officers, deputies, if you will, is really what we use right now in the high schools and middle schools. But we're talking about adding SROs. The school board has requested that we add them to all the elementary schools, as well as the Head Start program and the alternative ed programs. And I think we all think that's, it's a good idea. We want to keep our schools as safe as possible. But a new idea that was brought forth today that, that we're going to seriously consider is, is bringing back some retired law enforcement officers to serve in the SRO capacity for the elementary schools. I think at that level, it will, it might work very well as, as a great insurance policy for us, as well as, you know, I think retired people and younger children sometimes have, have more of a special bond than, than the ones closer in age. So we're going to look into that. I know Prince Williams County is doing a pilot program. Hopefully, we can copy them on that, and it will be successful. And we're, we're going to keep after this and, and not let this go away. So when we get the problem solved and everybody's safer, that, that's when we'll claim success. We also had pleasure having our new fire and rescue chief, Joe Cardello, from Prince George's County, here today in attendance. He'll be taking the helm on May 1st. So we're looking forward to that. Had a tour of the Fredericksburg Christian School. It's, it's an item on the school's CIP list, and Gary and I actually went together on that journey last week. I went to the, attended the Wide Water Beach Citizens Association Annual Meeting at the Wide Water Firehouse last Saturday, and held an, attended an Eagle Scout Court of Honor at the Church of Latter Day Saints on Courthouse Road. That was Sunday. And then, we, we had a interview and photo op this morning with the Freelance Star staff out at Wide Water State Park. And this was, I'm part of the Wide Water State Park Friends of the Park group out there. And we encourage more people to join us as the park gets opened, hopefully this summer for full-time usage. There's currently a visitor center constructed there. There's going to be two ranger residence on site, some pavilions. But Mr. Gavin brought up the, the point about the canoe launch. Well, there is, because there's no other public canoe launches in the county, there is one there in Wide Water on the state park property. So there'll be a canoe launch on the, on the Quiet Creek side, and then a boat launch on the Potomac River side. And those should be operational if, if they get the funds here for this summer. So maybe we have another, a point of access for, for public water access for our county residents already in hand. Anyways, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Ms. Monkey.
Okay. Let's see. The George Washington Regional Commission, we conducted five interviews last week, all via Skype for the first round. And this is for the new executive director for GWRC, because our executive director is retiring the end of this year. We'll be interviewing the three finalists the first week of May. And we've invited all the county administrators and the city manager for the city of Fredericksburg to, to participate in that if their schedules allow. And, you know, this position is really important because we have to rely on our regional partners. As many of you know, the city of Fredericksburg is on our 911 system. But we are going to be looking at how we handle trash in the future. And a lot of the things that we do in the region right now, we may not be doing them like this years down the road. So we're looking for all kinds of additional opportunities to partner together with our counties and the city of Fredericksburg. I do want to let everybody know, one thing that came to us about three or four months ago was maybe putting some money towards the homeless population. And all the counties felt that it was a little too late in our budgeting process, so we did not put money towards that. But the city of Fredericksburg has put about $60,000, and that includes some money from Mary Washington Hospital that they, that they gave. And they're going to try to address, I don't know, it's not a lot of money, but they're trying to do something to address the homeless population in the city of Fredericksburg. I also attended the 50th Anniversary of Falmouth Elementary School, and it was just great to go back and see all kinds of old teachers and administrators. Always a fun day. The Commonwealth attorney had quite a, a week last week. Eric Olson held his Victim Witness Award event. And we had a wonderful woman. Her name is Anne Maria Frances Thompson, who received this special award. And Eric selects somebody every year for the Molly Gill Award, somebody that does not let the trauma that they've experienced define who they are. And I'll just tell you, this woman was beaten with a baseball bat by her foster son. And she's lucky to be alive. And for her to receive that award was really phenomenal. And she was there and supported by her family. And I really appreciated all that comments from our Commonwealth attorney that he made on behalf of her and the other victims that have received this Molly Gill Award in years past. Also, in the Commonwealth attorney's office, we have Marilyn Dufrat, whom many of you know. She's in charge of the Victim Witness Program and goes in with victims into the court system, along with our courthouse dog, Khan. And Marilyn received an award last week for one of Virginia's 10 unsung heroes. And she got the, the ultimate award and received that from the Attorney General, Mark Herring, down in Richmond last Thursday. It was under Marilyn's leadership that she came up with the idea to have a dog in the courtroom with these victims that have been subjected to various crimes. She, we will, we will recognize her at one of our meetings here in May. But Marilyn is a wonderful person. She's very humble. And you probably saw her picture on the front page of the Freelance Star, if you get the newspaper over the weekend. So congratulations to Marilyn for that. I also participated in the Stafford Hospital Walk Run. And Ms. Shelton and I ended up running most of it together, although I think the EMS guys were really, and girls, were really worried about us. But I had to hurry up and run because I had to get down to opening day at Chichester Park for girls' softball and boys' baseball. But anyway, I was glad it was over. But I have to say, Ms. McLendon down here was really the one that tore up the pavement out there at the race. So don't ever underestimate our county attorney. And also, I, the last thing I want to say is this month is sexual assault month. The month of April is always sexual assault. And sexual assault is known with the color teal. So many of us have on a pin today or a ribbon recognizing how we can provide prevention and support for those people that have been subjected to sexual assault. And then lastly, I just want to thank the Sheriff's Department for partnering up with Mission Barbecue. Yesterday, the Rappahannock Board of Sexual Assault, Rappahannock Community of Sexual Assault, R-CASSA, they were given a check for $3,719 by Mission Barbecue for donations they received for proceeds at their, at Mission Barbecue during the month of March. So I really want to thank them, and I thank the Sheriff's Department for selecting R-CASSA as the agency to receive those funds this month. So that's all I have. And now, we have the report of our famous runner over here, Ms. McLendon.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have no report at this time.
Okay. Mr. Foley, do you have a report to the board?
Madam Chair, we have the construction report by our interim Public Works Director, Keith Dayton, and then also the third quarter budget report.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Madam Chairman, members of the board, Keith Dayton, interim director of Public Works, here to provide your construction update for this month. For the Poplar Road, Mountain View Road intersection improvement, we are still waiting for Verizon to complete their cable splicing. All of their utility work is done. We have our final plans into VDOT. We're waiting for their authorization to proceed to bid. And we'll get it out on the street just as soon as they release us. For the Garrisonville Road widening project, work is continuing with the sidewalk installation and the grading on both sides of the sidewalk. That work should be complete around the end of May. I'm sorry, yeah, complete in May. The final paving is scheduled-
Excuse me, Mr. Dayton, Ms. Mauer.
And I just want you to emphasize this, because I get this question on a daily basis. When will the cones go away? Say it twice.
That's right.
Wait a minute. We dealt with that on Route 17, didn't we, Mr. Snellings?
I'm sorry?
The cones were up for at least-
That's right.
-an additional six months.
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah. The, we do expect the paving, final paving to start in early May. That's when it's scheduled. And our expectation is that, well, the striping will, will begin immediately thereafter. Once the paving is done, the striping is done, the cones will be removed. So the work is still scheduled to be completed by the end of June. There's been no change from the contractor on that. And we're moving forward with our acquisition efforts. This, these are the result of condemnations in the past. For Ferry Road, there's really been no change. The design is complete. VDOT is waiting for November to go ahead and bid that project. Everything is on schedule for that. Brook Road Safety Improvements, we completed our construction contracting. The board authorized that. We have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for April 24th with a notice to proceed issued for May 1st. So work will be getting underway next month. Route One Improvements, those are the ones near Telegraph Road, Woodstock Lane. We have completed our contracting process for the design. The survey letters went out to all the property owners. We are scheduled to begin our field efforts for the survey and design next week. And there's an item on the agenda, authorize an opportunity for public input. That is tentatively scheduled, subject to board action for May 1st. And if everything moves according to, to our schedule, we should be ready for the, the actual design public hearing this fall. Did you have a question, Mr. Cavalier?
So you're saying, design for the permanent solution or the temporary solution?
Well, that'll, that'll be the permanent design with the new intersection for this fall. The other thing, we've been reporting on the temporary signal, that design is still under review. There's an issue with a conflict with a, with a pole. And VDOT is still trying to work through that with the central office. I had a conversation with the resident engineer, and he is pushing very hard to get a resolution on that. So I wanted to make you aware of that.
This has got to be the longest pole ever to put up.
Well, at the rate we're going, Mr. Cavalier, we may be done with the, the road construction before the temporary signal is installed. But we are still trying, and we understand the urgency of that. For a couple of our trail projects, the Phase Four, the plans were approved by the VDOT Central Office. We just got word this afternoon that, that we have our federal authorization. So right now, we're on a schedule to have it out for bid next week. And we're hoping to have bids received late in May, and would like to have this before the board for consideration for award at the June 5th meeting. But a lot needs to happen, but that's our schedule right now.
And you said Phase Four. That's the Belmont Ferry Farm?
The Belmont Ferry Farm.
Okay.
Yes. And that will take us up to the Chatham Bridge.
Yep, thank you.
Yes. The Phase Six of that same trail, there's been no change since the last conversation we had. We're still waiting for some sort of response from the George Washington Foundation.
Okay. And Ms. Shelton has a question?
I was just going to wait till you were done. Two things. When you have that pre-construction meeting for the 24th, will you invite me?
We can do that.
And then the next thing is, I hope that you know who we can contact to have the transformers removed off of Andrew Chapel and Courthouse Road. They're still there, laying on the ground from the storm that we had?
Yes. I'll, I'll look into that, absolutely. I wasn't aware, but-
Okay, thank you.
With respect, the animal shelter, a couple of our building projects, the painting is, is nearly completed, along with the drop ceiling installation. Final site work is underway. Topsoil and seeding should be done in the next couple of weeks. We are completing our security, the camera installation, the, the door alarm activation, and the telecommunications system installation is underway right now. And we're targeting a completion in late May and a June operational date on that facility. And finally, Fire Station 14, the contractor has continued their installation of erosion sediment control measures, constructing the sediment pond. And they are now just wrapping up installation of a force main to allow continued operation of the temporary station 14 while the permanent station is under construction. So that is finishing up today, as a matter of fact. So unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Any other questions for Mr. Dayton? Thank you, Mr. Dayton.
You're welcome.
Ms. Light.
May I have my presentation, please? Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Andrea Light, Budget Director, here to present the third quarter review. Overall property tax is expected to exceed the budget with the following variations. Real estate was projected in the fiscal year 18 budget with a 3% new growth construction. And are actually, what we're actually experiencing is 2%. However, personal property is projected to exceed the budget, negating the fluctuation in real estate. Sales tax continues to be strong revenue source, as does recordation. We're also expecting to see meals tax to exceed the adopted budget. In mid-year, the board approved two new positions in Public Works based on the increased workload driving our revenues. And we're still projecting those revenues to well exceed the budget. The increase in federal funds rate is creating increases in interest. And our ambulance fees are under budget, but are in line with our fiscal year 17 actuals. And so we are showing this in fiscal year 19 as a proposed kind of new norm. We're projecting total expenditures to be under budget, and that will meet the vacancy saving, the budget vacancy savings of $500,000. and that will meet the vacancy saving, the budget vacancy savings of $500,000. Health insurance is tracking under budget. In fiscal year '17, at year-end, we had $470,120 in health insurance savings. Per our board policies, that is given to OPEB. We feel at this point comfortable with the projection through this year-end that we're not going to have any major increases in health insurance. And we'll bring to the board today Proposed Resolution 1889 to send those funds to our OPEB trust. We are anticipating an increase in our Rappahannock Juvenile Detention Center, and that will be over budget by about $275,000. This overage is really due to our participation of the number of kids we have there and their length of stay. At mid-year, the board budgeted and appropriated an additional $1.1 million for state funding for CSA to cover our budget overages of $1.9 million. Currently, we are projecting private day school to be at $1.5 million over, and residential treatment to be just $389,000 over. At this point, we're not projecting any additional need for increases in state revenue. We'll continue to monitor this and bring this to the board if action is necessary. Our fiscal year '19 proposed budget did propose increasing our fund balance reserves for CSA to begin to hedge against these future overages. By policy, we maintain $1.5 million in our capital projects reserve, and this is from all year-end savings after all reserves are met, all of our reserve requirements. As of June 30th, that balance was $3.7 million. We have proposed in the fiscal year '19 budget to use some of that funding for one-time needs of approximately $2.1 million, and the CSA reserve that we just spoke about, and to increase a corrections fund balance to help with those swings in variations for the juvenile detention center and the jail budgets. If all these proposals are incorporated into the fiscal year '19 budget, we'll leave about $1 million left in the capital projects reserve. The county also holds capital projects reserves for the schools with a minimum required balance of $1.5 million. Above that minimum required, what is available today to spend is $46,222.
Ms. Light, going back on that previous slide, we talked about this in Budget and Finance, but I didn't ask this question. Are all of our county partners paying their fair share of the juvenile detention and correction budget?
Absolutely, they are. What happens at the beginning of the juvenile detention center is there's an operating cost that is split between all of our localities that are participating in that. And it is your participation, your length of stay, and your number of students that drives the change and can create this variation in the juvenile detention center that we have a true-up at the end of the year. At the end of the year, there are winners and there are losers. And this year, it looks like we will not be a winner.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
And as a member now of the jail board, I did learn that the new budget from the, from the Rappahannock Regional Jail for Stafford does have a reduction. So, we're a winner this year-
Oh, okay.
-for next year, FY '19.
And the fiscal year '19 for the juvenile detention center also has a small reduction. As their debt service, they are paying off the juvenile detention center this year. Their remaining amount, they'll pay with debt service, so that's a little bit exciting, too.
Okay.
We do have reserves that we established at the end of fiscal year '17 for some major capital projects, being the new courthouse, which we're projecting at $1.2 million from, these are from the funds from the courthouse fee charged of $3 for the participants there, collection, collected recordation tax over our budget, and it also captures our debt service savings over our budget. We also have reserves for major capital projects. As you know, we have a number of projects looming in the future, and we're projecting that to be about $900,000. Again, those sources are from meals tax over budget and debt service savings. The schools go through much the same processes we do, and they are looking at their revenues and expenditures now and projecting their revenues to be slight, to be in line with budget and their expenditures to be slightly under budget. Transportation has stronger revenues than projected, both in impact fees and gas tax. The impact fees are driven primarily by the increase of apartments. Utilities are seeing strong increase in availabilities, again, due to the apartments, and they're seeing some positive flows in their interest due to the actual federal funds rate. In conclusion, revenues are anticipated to exceed the budget. Expenditures are expected to be below the budget, leaving us available funds to ensure that we are meeting all of our required reserve. And our financial policies that have been adopted by the board continue to make us good stewards of taxpayer dollars.
Any questions? Okay, very comprehensive third quarter report. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the consent agenda. I don't believe anybody pulled anything after their board comments, so may I have a motion? All right, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries six to one.
Six to zero.
Six to zero, one absent. Thank you. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, item number 17. Public Works authorized the county administrator to advertise a public hearing to consider the condemnation and exercise of the county's quick-take powers in connection with the Juggins Road Improvement Project for temporary and permanent easements on Tax Map 21-L-6-M as in Mary. Proposed Resolution R18-83 in the Griffiths-Widewater.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I asked that this be deferred at the last meeting from the consent agenda, and I've since had the opportunity to speak with a member of the Board of Directors of the HOA and the manager, property manager in the neighborhood. And they, they have no confidence in the ability to be able to garner two-thirds votes on this matter, to explore it all avenues, emails and mail and everything else, and spend a lot of time and money, and they're just not getting the response. And so, they don't anticipate that the board in there is amenable to this particular solution, since that's the last resort. They did want to note that, I guess, when they, when the school board, or not school board, but the school's representative did go in there and explain the project to them, that there were some things that, that were explained to them that they're still a little concerned about. Originally, they thought there was going to be a sidewalk there so that they could walk along the new Juggins Road that's paved. And then, the second thing was that they wanted to be able to use the new school for HOA meetings once or twice a year. I've passed along that concern to the school board, Jamie Decatur, and said, because that's their decision. But, in light of all that, there don't seem to be any issues, so I would recommend that we go forward with this motion.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion carries six to zero, one absent. Next item is number 18, planning and zoning. Consider revoking SUP 80-11 for a used automobile sales and service facility located on Tax Map 21-44 in the B2 Urban Commercial Zoning District, 24 Derrick Lane. Proposed resolution is R18-101 in the Acquia District. Ms. Shelton? Okay, Ms. Blackburn. So, this item was originally discussed by the board in October 2017, and it was deferred for six months.
Can I have the computer, please?
Computer, please.
Madam Chairman, board members, I'm Susan Blackburn. This afternoon, you are to consider revoking Special Use Permit 80-11 for parcel number 2144 on Derrick Lane. And there's a picture of the property as outlined in red. Marcia, how can I get this to work? No, I want to see it on the screen. No, it's not.
Oh, that's interesting, because we're seeing it.
Oh, maybe I have to turn it on, maybe? There, okay, there we're good.
There we are, okay, we're all on the same page now.
All right, this is the, as I was saying, the location of the property is the one outlined in red. And to do a quick overview of what has happened in the past, the first notification, notice of violation was issued in December of 2015. There were subsequent ones issued in September 2016, March 2017, and May 2017. And there was a pattern of violating the ordinance. A notice of violation was issued. Compliance met near the end of the 30-day deadline. And this was a pattern that went on several, over several months. Due to the willful non-compliance, there was a request to revoke the special use permit. And the Planning Commission had a public hearing on September 27th, and you, the board, had a public hearing on October 17th. And due to an issue with notice, the board decided to defer voting on this issue and give the property owner six months to provide them the time to come into compliance and stay in compliance with the conditions of the special use permit. And staff has monitored the property for the past six months. And until February, the property had remained vacant. And there's some pictures showing that, and that was taken on January 28th. And staff approved a DMV license for an auto dealership to go in on February 1st. And since the property has been reoccupied, we have documented one violation from the special use permit. And this one happened to be the distance required from a public right-of-way. And this was actually one of the issues that was mentioned at the board meeting. The former chairman of the board had requested three items that he would like addressed, and one happened to be the setback from the public right-of-way. So, in March, staff went out and documented the locations, and those are the pictures from the March 28th. And we went out, we notified, we went out and measured it, and I want to see if there's... This one's hard to see. If you can see where, I think it's the turquoise lines are marked. That was where we marked a 10-foot distance. And this was taken from the information we received off the plat on the property as to how wide the right-of-way was of Derrick Lane, and the distance from, there was a distance marked on there, which will show up later in the presentation, of how far the corner of the building was from the center line of the right-of-way. So, there were some measurements we were used to get to this point. And we notified the operator on the 4th of April, and we were successful to notify the property owner on the 5th of April. And there was a discussion, we went out to the site on that day, on the 5th, and discussed where things were supposed to be. And as of April 9th, those cars have not been put back within the 10 feet. And this is the plat that we used, which does show, the green circle shows a 30-foot, where it just designates a 30-foot right-of-way. And the red circle will show the distance from the corner of the building to the center line of the right-of-way. And using those dimensions, we were able to move back to producing, you know, creating where the 10-foot would be. And these were our measurements. This, at this point in time, we used a laser to show where we were getting our measurements from. And as of April 11th, as I said, actually, on the 9th, too, the vehicles have been relocated, and they are off, they were off 10 feet. And I sent, I gave-
Ms. Blackburn, can you move the mic a little closer?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. And you received pictures today of photographs taken this morning, and they have marked off where the cars cannot be. And do we have any questions?
Okay, do you have any questions for Ms. Blackburn? Mr. Snellings?
So, what is the staff recommendation? I didn't see one in the background report.
The staff recommendation is, if the auto dealership cannot stay in compliance with the conditions of Special Use Permit 80-11 or the county code, then the board can take actions, take the necessary actions to avoid recurring violations, which would be by revoking SUP-
But he is in compliance.
80-11.
He is in compliance.
He is in compliance now, yes.
And since our last meeting, there's only been one violation, correct?
That is a condition of the, that we have been able to substantiate, yes.
That's the 10-foot?
Yes.
Okay. With respect to Derrick Lane and the background report, you rightfully said that we have no jurisdiction there whatsoever. That is a state road?
Concerning-
Derrick Lane, the test, test driving?
Test driving, yes. I, as a zoning, zoning ordinance does not have jurisdiction at this time over test driving on Derrick Lane. It is not a condition of the SUP.
Okay, that was what I was going to ask. And the other thing is, have you received anything from maybe the Sheriff's Department or any knowledge at all of speeding on Derrick Lane?
I have not, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from board members? Mr. Cohen?
Yes, very quickly, so if I followed your timeline, that, and knowing how the board packet is sort of put together, and I'm just looking at my calendar, so I get this straight. Our agenda is derived roughly 11th, 12th, so that the notification, you went out to talk to them on the 5th and then on the 9th-
Yes.
-saying that this was something that was coming forward. And since when you've talked to them, they've stopped. But prior to you talking to them, it continued.
It is my understanding that there were cars first put back on the site in February.
Right, so from February-
And then, when we came out in March 28th, the cars were located too close, yes.
If I go by the different dates that were given to us, February 24th is the first date that somebody noticed that 145, the BMW. We progress, you go out on the 5th, sort of communicate, then you met with them, I think you said, on the 9th, and that's around the timeframe where it would be said, this is on our agenda. So, prior to them being told by you all, hey, this is coming forward and people aren't happy, they were okay with doing what they were doing. It's only when you came out to them that they sort of cleaned up their act.
We came out and spoke to them about it.
Right, thank you.
All right, Ms. Shelton?
I'd like to share some information with you, Ms. Blackburn. Because my apologies, maybe we, I didn't follow the process correctly, but I think we did. On March 12th, I was originally notified that there was an issue by some people on Derrick Lane. And I notified our Assistant Action Officer and sent forward those pictures. And then, on March 17th, we received some information back showing that these particular vehicles were licensed, so they couldn't tow the vehicles that were in the, that weren't parked correctly, because that was one of the concerns, was that distance. And so, we thought perhaps they could be towed. The Sheriff's Department told us they could not. On March 18- On March eighteenth, I went out there. And when I went out there, and I didn't meet with any of you gentlemen, I apologize, because I don't, you weren't there. But on March eighteenth, I went out there and went with some of the individuals from Derrick Lane and looked at that distances. And so from there, when I came back, we sent our pictures over to planning and said, we need to pursue this to see what's going on. So I have, and it's in our records here in the county, but I have several reports that we have from different residents. We have pictures from different residents with different timestamps. And I have ten letters in, from individuals that have complained during that timeframe. The first one started, though, was March the twelfth. So I just thought, if I need to give you that information, then I'll most certainly pull it out of our Citizen Action files and give those to you.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Does anyone have any more questions?
I do.
Mr. Cavalier.
When we earlier deferred this on October seventeenth for six months till today, basically. So that was, what amounted to, in essence, is a six-month probationary period, I would guess. The dealership was vacant for, until February, a couple of months ago. So had they let it go two more months, we wouldn't be here today talking about this. Is that a good assumption?
We would still be here talking about this, but if it had not had any operation...
There wouldn't be any chance of a violation if they're not open for business.
Exactly.
So the decision to open for business just prior to the end of the probationary period, that's what I'm calling it, really wasn't. But it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, that they would take that chance. So, you know, I've been on this board a long time, and I've heard this group of residents many times out here, and I feel for them. I don't, I don't take lightly shutting down businesses and affecting people's livelihood. But I have sat here many a night, many a day, and listened to the same group of residents come out here and make complaint after complaint after complaint with regard to this business. And I am not seeing any compliance at all, and I don't have any confidence that this business will comply in the future.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Blackburn?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Let's just wait till, I think we're finished with questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Blackburn. All right. Since this is in the Acquahia District, I'll yield to you, Ms. Shelton.
Madam Chairman, I'm sorry to interject, I believe. I know we don't officially have an applicant here, but it may be beneficial to the board's consideration to allow the property owner's representative to respond to staff's contentions.
Okay. With the property owners...
I'm always happy to talk a little bit more. I disagree with some of the comments that have been made. This particular violation is a complicated one. It's a complicated one for this reason, what I mentioned earlier. In 2013, the issue was raised. In 2013, the owner, Mr. Attai, worked with Mrs. Blackburn, and they agreed to put a fence up. That fence is there now. And that was to mark the edge of the pavement and to provide a screen for the inventory that was on the property. The parking spaces were immediately on the other side of that fence. The county came out and inspected the fence. Now, why somebody didn't trip to the fact that those parking spaces were clearly within what is now believed to be the appropriate setback by the county, ten feet, I don't know. But that's exactly where they continued for the next four years. It was not an issue that was addressed, there was not, it was not a subject of the violations in the fall. That was, that had to do with parking cars across the street, a blatant violation of the parcel over there, so they could expand their inventory. And when the owner found out about that, he kicked the tenant out. Now, the other issue that I raised is that this is a nineteen eighty-one condition, or Special Use Permit. The plat that Ms. Blackburn showed you very clearly says this is a prescriptive easement along that road. It is not right-of-way in any conventional sense. I talked with the surveyor who put that plat together. It's not a plat of the road. It doesn't, there's no intent to measure the width of the road. The purpose of the plat is simply to give the boundaries of twenty-four Derrick Lane. The road is shown there, an edge of pavement is shown, which is very, very narrow. So that's, that's not an appropriate document to be utilized and to determine anything about right-of-way. I talked with VDOT. And in that case, VDOT went back, looked at all their records. They're the ones that came up with the nineteen eighty-four letter that I provided to the county attorney that says that they were trying to get the road paved back then. Please pave our road. It was the owner of the business that was saying, there's too much dust. Can you pave the road? And they were advised by the Department of Public Works that it wasn't in anybody's plans to pave that road. There's, they, nobody knows exactly where the old prescriptive right-of-way is. There's an edge of pavement, and that's what the staff is now using. Whether that was the old prescriptive right-of-way, nobody knows. It wasn't the surveyor's intent in nineteen eighty-one, or nineteen eighty-four, when the letter came from the Director of Department of Public Works. There were twenty-four cars a day on the road. In 2003, I gave your staff another resolution from this board, also, at that time, even seeking to continue to pave the road. Now, what was, the point is, what was intended in nineteen eighty-one? In nineteen eighty-one, you have used car dealers all up and down Route One, all the way up into Griffiths, Wide Water. The special use permits that were issued that I've seen all have a ten-foot setback from Route One. That was conventional for the time. Now, this one is elevated somewhat from Route One, but that was simply the way the conditions were set up for used car lots back then. Derrick Lane did not exist in any form like it does today. So my position is very simple. There's a perfectly comprehensible reason why there was confusion about the parking spaces. And the county had delved into it a couple of times and not done anything about it. Now, we think the survey came in from one of the neighbors who continue to be upset, and I get that, and I don't blame them, given the past history. But that was the basis that was used to try to figure out this right-of-way. It's not a valid basis for doing that. But all things considered, if they had known, if they had known that they were parked in the wrong place, they wouldn't have done it. And when they were, when it was brought to their attention, they moved their cars. You know, they lost a whole line of parking spaces here. Now, I think there's a legitimate issue as to whether that condition is applicable here. But they haven't done anything in bad faith. And they categorically deny that they're doing test runs, which is not even an issue that is before you, and that they're doing any unloading of any vehicles along Derrick Lane. So they've been there two months, and immediately, there's another altercation with the neighbors. So there's two sides to this story. And this is a business that's trying to get started again, you know, at a minimum. Two months is not enough time for them to establish another track record to show you that they're going to be able to move forward in a lawful manner and not continue to have problems with the neighbors. It's going to take two to tango, of course. So that's, that's my position. But I think it would be extremely premature to revoke a conditional use permit under these circumstances. Also bear in mind, the notice issue that Ms. Blackburn mentioned last October. All you did is continue it. You know, that hasn't changed. You know, in my, in my view, because of the lack of notice to the owner back in October, you had no authority to act, because he didn't have notice of the underlying violation that led to the revocation. You simply continued it. Nothing new has happened. There's no new, incidentally, there's no new notice of violation that's going out here. You know, they simply came and said, your cars are too close, and they backed them up. But there's no new notice of violation. So that's where it stands, as I see it. And I, but I can tell you this. You have their attention. They're very concerned about coming into compliance. I don't think that they're going to do anything intentionally to make their case more difficult. They want to run a business. And there are a lot of these, there are a lot of cases like this in Stafford County, where you've got old businesses, things that you would never do again today in this location. But they're there. And at some point, you know, it'll be redeveloped. Derrick Lane will get straightened out. But that's going to take some time. And in the meantime, you know, I think they have a right to do what they're doing there, provided they go by the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Lemming.
Yes, ma'am. Did I talk enough? Thank you all.
Okay. Ms. Shelton, I'll bring this item back to you.
Thank you. I love small businesses in Stafford County. I think they're really, really important, and they are frankly what makes Stafford County where it is today. And so I also think it's very, very important that all of us get along together. And so it's the expectation that we would have businesses work really well with our residences in our community. Last October, it was quite clear what the challenges were within this, with this business on Derrick Lane. It was quite clear to the owners, these are the expectations of the community that's surrounding them. And so it's also quite clear from the discussions that we've had with Derrick Lane and my own personal experience in going out there, that we're not getting that respect to the community. So therefore, I do want to make a motion that we revoke this conditional use permit, which, I'm sorry.
SUP.
SUP. Oh, I'm sorry. That's, you're right. It's a SUP. So on, and this is Resolution R eighteen one oh one.
Okay. That's a motion. Is there a second? All right. Any discussion? Mr. Snellings.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And believe me, I sympathize with the folks on Derrick Lane. I live on a very high-traffic road. When my wife and I moved there, thirty-five years ago, we had a traffic count of about two fifty, now it's around seven thousand. So I know exactly what it is, is cars speeding by your house. But today, I've only heard two things that are going to force me to vote against this resolution. Number one, the main concern I had from the residents was test driving on Derrick Lane, which we have no control over, it's not an issue, it's not a conditional use permit or anything. And number two, I've reread the staff recommendation three times, and there really is no solid recommendation. It just says, and I will quote this so that everybody can hear it. "If the auto dealership cannot stay in compliance with the conditions of our, or the county, or the SUP or the county code, the board could," didn't say should, "could take action necessary to avoid recurring violations by revoking the SUP." To me, that's not a recommendation. That's just saying, you could do it if you want. It doesn't say, don't do it. It's, it's just not a recommendation. So for those two reasons, I'm going to vote against the resolution.
Okay. Mr. Cohen.
Yes. And I was on the Planning Commission when this first came up. And actually, the first communication I received from the residents on this issue in general was March of 2017. To say that they haven't documented is to say that you haven't been paying attention to the residents of Derrick Lane. They have been meticulous in their documentation as to the violations. So when they come forth with us and say that in a seven-week time period that they've been in operation, this entity has violated or caused issues with the neighbors four times, that causes me concern. When staff goes out there and finds that indeed there is a problem with the distance, our staff is phenomenal, and I think that the laser work did well in showing that. A couple of things. First of all, that really caused me consternation is the phrase that they moved their cars under protest. I look back, and I wasn't trying to be rude, but I look back during, Ms. Blackburn, sorry, not to be rude, but I looked at my comments when this came before the Planning Commission, part of our transparency, Madam Chair. And I made a point of saying that you know what the neighbors have concerns with, you want to be good neighbors. It is incumbent upon you to do X, Y, and Z. And I understand, you know, we cannot dictate about where they take their dress, test drives, et cetera. But again, the owner and his representative heard very clear from a Planning Commissioner and from me that it was incumbent on them. When it was a deferral of this for a six-month grace period, and I understand why we had to do that, but the idea was not that they would keep the business closed for X number of months, so that would count. In fact, I believe, and I didn't scan the whole thing, but I believe we asked if that was a possibility, and theoretically, it could. So yes, you know, they could have just sat on this for six months and then gone back to violating it, and the whole thing would start all over again. And I press that this has to deal with good faith measures. And unfortunately, saying that it's premature to do something at this time, to say that there's not enough time to see if there's been a violation, puts the onus on the neighborhood to have to sit there and wait until it's enough time, so that it's sort of bad. What, are we going to wait another three, four, or five months before we actually say this is inappropriate? And the business about no new notice, Ms. McClain and I had many conversations about that, whether, when a new notice would have to kick in. Perhaps the best thing was said by the manager, who said that there is a lot of confusion by people turning into Derrick Lane and turning around and go back out. And that obviously is detrimental to his business. So everything about this is detrimental to his business. Mr. Lemming pointed out that, you know, they're there, so they should continue, but that maybe things shouldn't have been there. Well, maybe when, in that three-month time period, the owner should have said, you know, maybe this isn't the place for a car dealership, maybe it should have been something else. So I just don't believe that the neighbors should have to keep putting up with this. The staff has documented that there was a violation. And I just don't see any reason of kicking this can down the road again, and then again, and again. I support business tremendously, but it needs to be good neighbors, which is what I stressed back in September. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Any other board members? Mr. Cavalier?
I'd just like to say that the residents of Derrick Lane here have been before several times, not only on this issue, but also on the hotel issues, too. And I've always found you to be very respectful of the process here, very patient, because this has dragged on for a long time. But in this case, I think, you know, problems of the past are indicators of the future. I don't see any valid reason that anything is going to change. And if we don't do this today, you're going to be back, and we're going to have this problem yet again. So I'm going to support Ms. Shelton's motion.
All right. Ms. Mauer.
So I've sat here and I've listened, and Mr. Snellings does make a compelling argument. I was the one who made the motion for the six-month deferral. And however, knowing, knowing the risk that you were under in making this financial investment in re-establishing a car lot, and the number of violations that were, had occurred, it was incumbent, and you have legal representation by a gentleman who has been in the county forever and ever and ever. No, not talking about your age there, Mr. Lemming, but it was incumbent upon you to get with the county, to ensure that you would not be in violation. I mean, this was the last chance that you had when we granted the six-month extension. And the reprieve that you got by not having a business there altogether, you know, you're there, and within, like, thirty days, we're back into violation, and the Derrick Lane residents are once again having to deal with the implications of this car lot. And so I'm going to support this motion and vote with you, Ms. Shelton, for the revocation of the special use permit.
I want to thank the residents for being incredibly patient. I don't think you deserve some of the things that have happened on your road. When you buy a house, you hope to live there in a quiet, peaceful environment, and you obviously haven't had that. I think we've heard from all board members, and it's kind of all already been said. I, too, am a big proponent of small businesses, but I don't feel like there's been a lot of mutual respect and tact and diplomacy on both sides. So when you're in situations like that, it is a partnership. And so I, too... So when you're in situations like that, it is a partnership, and so I too am going to be supporting this motion to revoke the CUP, or the SUP. So I believe all board members have spoken, please cast your vote. Tally the vote. The motion passes to revoke the SUP, five with one against and one being absent. Motion carries. And with that, our board, Mr. Snellings will now read us into closed session.
A resolution to authorize closed meeting, whereas the Board desires to hold a closed meeting for discussion regarding recruitment for the Department Head Position of Economic Development and Public Works, and whereas pursuant of Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, such discussion may occur in closed meeting.
Okay, please, thank you. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. We are now in closed session. All right, please cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to zero with one absent. We are now adjourned until the seven o'clock meeting. We have a prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. The prayer will be done by Supervisor Shelton and the pledge by Ms. Mauer.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with grace as we make the decisions that affect the citizens of Stafford County, and continue to remind us that all we do here today and all we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth for your greater glory. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. And before we start our public hearings, we do have a very exciting announcement tonight regarding our new Economic Development Director, so I'm going to let Mr. Foley tell you a little bit about our new hire.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pleased to announce the selection of John P. Holden as the county's next Economic Development Director. John has over 20 years of experience with economic and business development, and extensive experience in all aspects of economic development. He was selected after a national search that included applicants from 11 different states, went through an extensive interview and selection process. His background includes his most recent position as Vice President of Combined Management. Prior to that, he served as President of the Lewiston-Auburn Economic Development Growth Council, and previously served as the Community Economic Development Director for the city of Rockland, Maine. He does come to us from the state of Maine. He has a bachelor's degree in science from Bowling Green University, and a master's in science in economic, community economic development from the University of Maine. He has served on numerous boards and committees and commissions, and I think is a really great fit for Stafford County. So we're pleased to announce him as our new director, and he will start on May 21st.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Okay, with that, we are now going to have presentations by the public. If you would like to comment, please remain courteous and respectful to the audience and to board members. It's important for you to keep track of your time at the podium. The Board would like to give all interested individuals a chance to speak, so try to stay on schedule to ensure that everyone will have enough time to address the Board. If you spoke about an item during the afternoon session, you may not speak about that same item again this evening. If you wish to speak about one of the items scheduled tonight for the public hearing, please hold your comments until that public hearing has been opened. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the Board, speak into the microphone slowly, clearly, and loudly. Begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light on the podium to monitor the time of your presentation. Green indicates the start of your presentation, yellow indicates that you have one minute to summarize your comments, and red obviously indicates that your presentation time is complete. So with that, if there's anybody that would like to speak about any item that is not a public hearing, now is your time to come and speak. And I do have a few speaker cards, so we'll start with these people. The first one is Lou Wendling.
My name is Lou Wendling, 1011 Blackbeard Drive, Stafford, Virginia. I have lived in Stafford County since 1986. I am a retired teacher from Brookpoint High School and a substitute teacher. My husband and I are raising our seven-year-old grandson, who is in first grade at Anne Moncur Elementary School. I am active in the PTO, so I spend a lot of time at Moncur Elementary, both for the PTO and for my grandson. I'm going to share with you what I observe almost every day. My grandson is greeted each day with a big smile and a good morning from his wonderful bus driver, Ms. Diane. With love and firmness, she works with the children on the bus to help them behave and be safe. When Connor gets to school, he is greeted again with a big smile and warm welcome by Mrs. Martinez, the Assistant Principal, and Mr. Mockie, the Principal, both of whom know Connor well. Then he goes into Mrs. Smith's first-grade classroom for the day. Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Laporta, the paraprofessional, clearly love Connor and work to accommodate his individual needs and make sure he succeeds academically. When he needs to see the nurse, Mrs. West, he goes to Mrs. West, who makes him feel safe and loved. I wish I had time to mention every single person at Moncur who helps my grandson succeed. If there was any justice in this world, every single one of them would make a million dollars a year, because that is what they are worth to my grandson and all the other children in Stafford County. The future success of this county depends on these educators. It is time for you to pay them what they deserve. I beg you to keep the property tax rate the same for this year. I'm sure you are aware that there is a teacher shortage in Virginia, and that we are not keeping up with the teacher pay in surrounding counties. There is no excuse for a county as rich as Stafford to be shortchanging our educators. Why is Stafford County training new teachers who leave after a few years for higher pay? Why are we playing catch-up with surrounding counties in teacher salaries? Why aren't they forced to play catch-up with us? If you continue to shortchange our educators, our schools will decline and businesses will not want to locate here, and you are going to have to own that. My husband is retired military and I'm a retired schoolteacher. We are not rich, but we can certainly afford to pay more than we do now, to pay our teachers a decent salary. You are being penny-wise and pound-foolish if you lower the tax rate. Please raise teacher salaries now. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Perham.
My name is Julie Param. I live at 415 Decatur Road. I teach at Hampton Oaks Elementary School. I want to begin by thanking you for listening. Thank you for having the courage to make the tough decisions, the courage to advertise a tax rate that will, in effect, raise my taxes. I know that you have a difficult job, and I know that you are having to reconcile many varied viewpoints and priorities. I truly do appreciate your service. A few weeks ago, I spoke to you in support of the advertised 99-cent tax rate. I haven't changed my mind. In the past several weeks, I've spoken to two former building teachers of the year who are looking to work elsewhere. They're planning to move to divisions in Virginia where they can afford to live in the community in which they teach. It is absolutely tragic that our teachers don't have the option of living in Stafford, because Stafford simply doesn't pay them enough. I've also heard from bus drivers and paras who are looking for new places to work. The surrounding counties almost all pay more than Stafford. We currently have a shortage of bus drivers. That's not going to change if we lose these dedicated people. I know that you're hearing from the No New Taxes Brigade. These are the ones who constantly preach that the only good tax is a dead tax, and that only by cutting or equalizing the tax rate can we make Stafford attractive to residents and businesses. I say, that's just not true. If you want to attract residents, support your school system. At the last meeting, there were at least two people who spoke about moving to Stafford because of our school system, and they also said they were considering leaving Stafford because the school, they believed that the schools are deteriorating. If you want to attract businesses, support your school system. Businesses regularly cite the quality of school systems when they look for new locations. And if you want to support your school system, you must support your employees. Buildings are just brick and mortar. It's the people in your system that make it excel. It's the 35-year veteran who still spends his summer taking classes at his own expense so he can stay current with new trends. It's the paraprofessional who brings an extra apple to school so that the child who doesn't have a snack won't go hungry. It's the bus driver who greets your child every day and ensures that she makes it to school and home again safely. It's the office staff who greets the public with a smile. As I said at the last meeting, teacher working conditions are student learning conditions. It's time for you, as our elected representatives, to make sure that our students are learning in the optimal conditions every day. We, the employees of Stafford County Public Schools, are doing our part. Please do yours. Please approve the 99-cent tax rate, increase our funding, it really is the right thing to do. Thank you.
I live at 109 Nina Cove, Stafford, Virginia. Good evening, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I am 15 years old and a student at Brookpoint High School. I have been a student in this county for five years, and I've seen some of the negative changes within those years. For example, when I was in fifth grade, we wrote an essay to document, and had to document our sources using MLA and APA formats. Sounds great, right? Well, that was five years ago. For the next four years, I wrote only one other paper using MLA, and that was in eighth grade. And three-fourths into my freshman year, I'm finally writing a second one. Students are required to write essays in college, so I don't know how not writing them is preparing me for college. Oh, and by the way, I take honors classes. With how we pay teachers, though, I wouldn't want to spend my free time grading essays either, so maybe that's it. Pay, according to Wiki, just kidding, according to World Atlas, April 20, 2017, Stafford is the sixth richest county in the United States. And Spotsylvania just approved their budget, giving bus drivers and teachers a 4% raise increase, paraeducators 8%, et cetera, while Stafford's enhanced increase is only 2.5%. Wait, Spotsylvania isn't even in the top 25 according to World Atlas. According to your Challenges of Growth chart, Prince William County has less students per capita, but their teachers earn more. You like figures, right? So what's the disconnect? One example of the type of people we are attracting here in Stafford with our pay would be a substitute who put his Twitter handle on the Board and asked us, minors, to follow him. That's creepy, but these are the kinds of people we are attracting. Several of my former teachers have left this county for higher-paying jobs in neighboring counties. One of my teachers even went into a completely different profession. I, we, deserve better, and you are a huge part in making that happen. I kindly ask that you not only support our teachers, but bus drivers and paraeducators, et cetera, with higher pay so that we can attract and retain quality professionals to our schools. You get what you pay for, that's an idiom, and we use idioms to awaken our senses. I hope that the members are awake when it comes to the budget. If you don't support our teachers, bus drivers, and others in education, then you don't support us, your future. It's that simple. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sean Freeman.
My name is Sean Freeman. I live at 109 Nina Cove. Thank you for allowing me to speak to the Board this evening. I've witnessed the growth of this county over 20-plus years during my 22-year Marine Corps career. I returned here for the third time in 2006. The education system was highly rated. Since that time, I have seen a decline. A number of teachers have left for other professions or to pursue similar teaching positions in neighboring counties. Two examples, Christopher and Stephanie Martin, both current residents of Stafford County and former teachers here as well, both left because, I quote, "the pay is entirely unreasonable." Close quote. They're not the only ones to come to this decision, and I do not believe that their case is a statistical anomaly. Page 13 of the county's own proposed budget says it all. Student enrollment growth has increased dramatically, and it's expected to continue to do so, yet our tax rate is far below that of neighboring Prince William County. We have the second-highest student population among comparative localities, and the fourth-highest in the state. These challenges of growth in our county are the reason the school system is changing. Teacher salaries are the key to overcoming these challenges. Stafford County's public ranking among the top wealthiest, is among the top wealthiest in the United States. Why then is Stafford unable to pay its teacher salaries comparative with surrounding counties? Besides an inadequate tax rate, I would submit that the basic answer to this question is simple, a lack of fiscal priorities. Our priorities are public safety, education, and transportation. We can live to, we can learn to live to deal with traffic, but on the other hand, there's no way to compensate for a second-rate education that doesn't prepare our children for the future. There's no second chance at education for our kids. I implore you to fund education requirements ahead of transportation concerns. This county also seems to place a higher priority on new buildings over who we put in our classrooms to educate our children. The county spent over $66 million to replace Stafford High School. Why not a more cost-effective renovation and expansion of the existing facility? According to the Freeland Star, the proposed cost to replace Moncur Elementary started below $30 million, as it has now ballooned more than 20% to nearly $36 million. And this investment doesn't even address overcrowding in the county. Since it only accommodates the same number of students, no net gain in student capacity. Instead of one state-of-the-art building, couldn't we get two less elaborate elementary schools to address some overcrowding? Glimmering buildings do little for the education if we're losing highly qualified educators to neighboring counties due to inadequate salaries. All that glitters is not gold, and the money spent on facilities will have been wasted if you lose your qualified educators. Will this lack of prioritization on teacher salaries be realized only after it's too late for those children impacted by inadequate education? This county has the ability to pay its educators, but we lack the ability to properly prioritize resources. Thank you.
Okay, Donna Chitty.
Hi there, my name's Donna Chitty. I live at 8 Hope Valley Lane. I've been a resident of Stafford County for almost 12 years. I just found out this week, and shame on me for not reading the sign about zoning, that the Dollar General is being put in across from Stafford Elementary. And I want, the thing that I would like to address with that is, we already have a very known traffic issue there at Stafford Avenue and Courthouse, and I want to know how putting something there is going to help alleviate that already desperate problem. I don't know who to speak to, I just heard about it, I just wanted to come here and bring that up, but I am actually scared sometimes trying to take a right, I mean, a left, in the afternoons, because I cannot see what is coming from Courthouse Road. I've had four daughters go to Brookpoint High School, I've watched it grow, this area grow, but nothing changed there. I've heard rumblings that we're waiting to see what the intersection off of 95 is going to do, but I don't see how that's going to help that intersection, and I really don't see how putting a retail establishment right there is going to help that intersection either. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Foley, could we make sure we get her name and address and somebody could contact her about, right, but we'll need her telephone, other contact information. Right, but we'll need her telephone, other contact information.
Yeah, we'll follow up after.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak about anything else that's not related to a public hearing? So I'll start over here on this side, or... Okay, go ahead, Ms. Carloni. You can come up. All right, so we'll start over here with Ms. Carloni, and then after that, if there are other speakers on that side, and then we'll move to the other side.
Ruth Carloni, three hundred Mount Olive Drive, I, road. I certainly agree with the last speaker. That is on a curve. It's where a funeral home is with entourages that come in and out. It's a horrible location for a business in and out like that. But what I wanted to say tonight, pardon?
No, I was just, wanted the clerk to start the timing.
Oh.
You can keep going. That's okay.
Oh, thank you.
You got, you got a few extra seconds.
Anyway, something that could take care of all these problems, the shortage of volunteer firemen to award them with something more. I think we just do a license right now for them. I'm not too sure what else they have coming. But something that we had approved, not we, but the county supervisors had approved, was a business license to operate in Stafford. Now, you tell me what happened to that. Was it rescinded? We're the only jurisdiction that I know of here locally that has a business license. There isn't anybody, another jurisdiction I know of that doesn't have a business license. This would take care of our salaries. It would take care of some of our, like, serve and some of the other organizations that we support. We could have some events locally compared to Fredericksburg. But the most important thing is for teacher's salary and the bus drivers. And when you work in an area as a teacher, when you're in a transient area that we are, you have a lot more challenges than you would in some maybe lower southwest area that there's a lot of stability in the people that live there. But we do need a business license, and I know that's contrary to what you would think about, but it would take care of our problem here. And these people are so true when you hear them speak. And the young lady that spoke, they're absolutely right that we are shortchanging the kids by having the turnover that we do and the teachers. And just because of salary that could be taken care of... Oh, already. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else on this side of the board chambers like to speak and address the board? If so, please come forward. Okay, on this side.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Cox. I'm at twenty-one eighty Harpoon Drive. I'm a teacher for Stafford County Schools proudly for fifteen years. And I came to this morning, or I came to the conclusion this morning I was going to speak to you about buses. How the buses are working in the county, it's, it's, it's so frustrating. It's been frustrating since I've been here. School teachers see the kids come in twenty minutes late easily every single day. I'm an elementary school teacher. And we are required to work eight-thirty to four o'clock in the afternoon, but we don't go home at four o'clock in the afternoon. Our contract says four o'clock, easily twenty minutes after that, day after day after day for fifteen years. And the reason is because the buses are running on double shifts. That means we get the buses in, the children get on the bus, they go out into the transportation system that you have set up, they go out on the traffic that Northern Virginia is very famous for. They come back through all that traffic, get a second run, take the children back home. First days of school, easily, we're there an hour extra. From that point on, it's easily every single day, twenty minutes. That's elementary school. On top of that, high school teachers, from what I'm understanding, their buses are already set up. They can take the kids that need to go, they're done. Elementary school teachers are, literally, we're getting paid less per hour because of the way that this is run. And it's unfair to the kindergarten kids, it's unfair to the first-grade kids, second, third, fourth, all the way up because of that. So that's what I was going to come and talk to you about today. But this was a really rough day for me. Today, I got kicked in the stomach by a student. This student has a packet of information about how his behavior has been previously. This is not something new for him. And the reason I got kicked was because I asked him not to run in the hallway. That's the first student. Earlier this year in December, I was struck and kicked by a student, leaving bruises. Why? Because I told her she was not to strike another child. In September, again, third child, different child, struck me. The reason she struck me is because I was trying to intervene her from striking another child. It's my understanding that these children are needing, they need help, they need support, and we're not getting it in schools. We're talking six-year-olds, seven-year-olds that have never been in school before, and we're needing your help. It's my understanding that we should be having one counselor for every two hundred and fifty children per school. Our school has seven hundred children. We have one full-time counselor, one half-time counselor. We have students coming into public schools angrier and more physically aggressive than ever before. I've been in this business for a long time. I've never seen so many children so frustrated with what has happened to them previously to coming into school.
Thank you, ma'am.
The kids need help. We need help. We need to feel supported, appreciated, and we need to feel safe. So please invest in our schools, invest in the students, invest in the community, invest in people that can help these children. We want to be proud. We want to take our time and care about these children the way they need to be cared about, and we can't do it without your funding. Please look after us.
All right, thank you very much. Would anyone else on this side of the board chambers like to speak and address the board?
Hi, good evening, Madam Chairperson and members of the board. My name is Sharon Foley. I live at forty-nine Fountain Drive in the Acquia District. Have you missed me? I haven't been here in a while. I was recently looking, and you probably all have seen this document, some of you helped to write this document. It's from twenty-ten, but it's got this beautiful picture of the courthouse redevelopment area. That's not what this region of the county looks like at all. We haven't made much progress on making it look like this. I remember being really excited because I live right near here, like, two miles from here, and I thought this would be really cool. Instead, we still have piles of dirt, not unsimilar to the Acquia Town Center, and our newest great addition is going to be the Dollar Store that is going to open up across the street from Stafford Avenue, which is one of the worst traffic problems in the county that has been ignored. And I just, I have to wonder what's happening. And what kept hitting me today was, I think of the game Jenga, and I don't know how many of you have played Jenga with your family members, but it's a, it's a tower. And every time we lose experienced teachers, pieces at the bottom of the tower come out. Every time we lose a superintendent, pieces toward the bottom of the tower come out. Every time we approve another housing development without proper infrastructure to support it, pieces toward the bottom of that tower come out. When Spotsylvania raises their, all of the salaries for all of their school staff, and we can't compete with that, pieces of that tower come out. The Stafford County Jenga Tower is wobbling. Our infrastructure is wobbling, and the tower's going to collapse. I moved my family here for our schools, and I learned that from my parents. My parents moved us from New York State to Connecticut when they could no longer afford Catholic education for their nine children. Can't imagine how they afforded it as long as they did. But we had to leave our town because the public schools weren't good enough and went to a place where we could get a good public education. My husband was retiring from the Marine Corps, and we moved here for these schools. If he was retiring today, I don't know that I would do that because the towering, the tower is wobbling, and I'm really scared. As a resident, as a parent who has one more child to go finish up in school, I've got four and a half more years, as a homeowner who is someday going to want to sell my house to a family, who's going to want to educate their children in Stafford County Public Schools, we need to support our schools, we need to support our infrastructure. I beg this board to pass a tax rate that will allow us to support this infrastructure because you know we're not getting it from the federal government, and we're not going to get everything we need from the state government. So we've got to do it locally, and I ask you, please, to do that and to put education at the top of the list. Thank you.
Thank you.
You never know, man, where I am. Where's Waldo, Paul Waldowski, Eight Picket Lane? I like one of the speeches where we talked about priorities. I want you all to know that during the lame duck session, we have a four-point-seven-million-dollar new fire station, and also, we paid a million dollars for that land outside North Stafford. And then you wonder why we have no money. This Commonwealth is gerrymandered, and I just found how to get on the new gerrymandered committee to take care of delegates. But I want to remind all you citizens, if we made this board five instead of seven, we'd still have governing body. We wouldn't have an even number vote like we're going to have tonight, three-three in the public hearings, just like we did a long time ago. That'd be kind of neat. Also, you've got to remember, some of our politicians, like the one that's missing today, only got forty-nine point nine-nine percent of the votes. That's point zero-one percent, less than fifty percent plus one. That's not a majority. And speaking of tax rates, I just figured out that my land is recorded as zero-point-zero-zero-zero acres, and it was compared to properties that is recorded as zero-point-zero-zero-zero acres. So I asked the county administrator, there was one in nineteen eighty here, and a resolution was passed, eighty-two dash three forty-one. It said I should get water and sewer, but it's not me I'm fighting for. I've told you before, I have schoolteachers, blue-collar workers, who all live in a community where I own property in the Griffiths Whitewater District. Now, speaking of priorities, the Fredericksburg Christian Academy is going to come about, and if you listen to the school board meeting, they don't know if it's going to take ten-point-one million, or then I hear ten-point-six million. But when you're a lawyer, you know, you don't care about a half a million dollars. That's pretty simple. You know, you can make that in billable hours. And I warn people about the student population. Unless you've got grandkids that are coming in here, beware of the numbers that you are using, because when I moved here, when the school systems were really good, there was five schools, now there's thirty, and my youngest son, Adam, used to ace the SOLs, the Standards of Learning. And let me leave you with this and remind you, there's only forty-five states in the United States, four Commonwealths where common sense is not common, and a boy scout corrected me at these public hearings, the Republic of Texas.
Would anyone else like to address the board? If so, please come down to the podium. Okay, with that, appreciate all the public comments. We're now going to move on to item number nineteen, which is a public hearing. Finance and Budget Set the Tax Rate for the Lake Arrowhead Service District, Proposed Ordinance oh eighteen dash twenty-two. So at this point in time, I'm going to open the public hearings for this item. If anyone would like to speak about this tax rate for the Lake Arrowhead Service District, you can please come forward now. Yeah, do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, Madam Chair, just a brief overview.
Okay.
By our Budget Division Director, Andrea Light.
All right, Ms. Light.
Oh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Andrea Light, Budget Division Director. Before you tonight are two ordinance to set a tax rate for two new service districts. The first, Lake Arrowhead, was advertised at ten cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value, and is projected to generate a hundred and twelve thousand dollars to repay the county for dam repairs. The second, Lake Carroll, was advertised at point one-four-four cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value, and is projected to generate thirteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five in fiscal year nineteen to repay county dam repairs. We anticipate these tax rates to be recalculated annually to consider the change of assessed value and to compound to, as compared to the revenue that is needed.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Light? Ms. Mauer.
Just for clarification, the one hundred and twelve thousand was what we had originally budgeted in order to, so it was, the actual tax rate was lowered due to reassessments. Is that correct? Or changed due to reassessments?
The tax rate was, it was advertised at ten cents.
Right, but that was because the, so originally, when we did the budget, there was, it was before reassessments, but we had budgeted for a hundred and twelve thousand in revenue? Okay, thank you.
Okay, and any other questions for Ms. Light? Okay. Would anyone like to address the Lake Arrowhead Service District tax rate?
Do I have to repeat my name? The Rock Hill District. Now, the biggest question I have about Lake Arrowhead is, after finding that there are properties in this county that are not recorded, especially in the nineteen eighties, I don't know when Lake Arrowhead was, was deeded, but that's one of the concerns I have in regards. If I remember right, there was only nineteen houses that got in Lake Arrowhead with that, that water lake that was granted by the board. And I don't understand how a hundred and twelve thousand dollars is fair to just the Lake Arrowhead subdivision when Lady Justice wears a blindfold, and you're supposed to be fair, but it seems to me like you're, well, let's say, you guys are Republicans, so you must have a pirate's patch on the left eye, and you're favoring the Lake Arrowhead Service District.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing, bring that back to Ms. Mauer in the Rock Hill District.
And Madam Chairwoman, I would like to move for approval of Proposed Ordinance zero-one-eight dash twenty-two.
Okay, any discussion?
This is a, the culmination of a year and a half, two year, two and a half years I've been on this board. In solving the Lake Arrowhead Service District, I see Senator Stewart is here in the audience. I want to thank you for assisting Lake Arrowhead in getting some grant funding in order to help to repair their dams. Unfortunately, it wasn't enough, and the members of this particular community came together in large majority to support this service district. They support the tax, they are well aware, and I really appreciate the board's support in assisting in solving a much-needed, long-drawn-out problem. So thank you, Senator Stewart, for being here, and with that, I make that motion to approve.
I would say that it's successful because there's nobody here opposing an increase in taxes. That's very unusual. Okay, with that, if everybody could please cast their votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to zero with one absent. Moving along to item number twenty, Finance and Budget Set the Tax Rate for the Lake Carroll item number 20, Finance and Budget, set the tax rate for the Lake Carroll Service District, proposed ordinance 018-23. This is in the George Washington District. Yeah. So I need to open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the Lake Carroll Service District? Staff's already addressed it. Would anyone in, on the board like to address, would anyone in the chambers like to address the board on this specific public hearing regarding Lake Carroll Service District?
Madam Chair, just for clarification, Ms. Light covered both of these public hearings at one time because they're very similar.
Yes, she did. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Okay, it doesn't seem like there is, ma'am, would you like to address the board? Oh, okay. All right. With that, we're going to close the public hearing. This is in the George Washington District. Mr. Cohen?
Yes, I make a motion for approval.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Just like the Lake Arrowhead, and I almost thanked the people for going through what they did in Lake Arrowhead because it made it, set a precedent for what they need in Lake Carroll. I've met with many of the residents down there. This is an arrangement that, it doesn't hit everybody, it hits the people that are actually benefiting from the lake. And they are, they went through, got signatures from everybody who is involved to go and agree with this procedure and this proposal. So I, the community that has to pay this, which is not every single Staffordian, is in agreement with this. And I think its staff has done a terrific job in working with the community to try to make this happen. And they have been really great in giving me information so that I can stay in touch with the people and let them know what's going on. So thank you.
Okay. All right, with that, cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to zero with one absent. Item 21, Planning and Zoning, Consider amended proffers on 12.25 acres, zoned RBC on tax map parcels 44W-2A and 44W-2B to modify requirements for washer and dryers in each unit in Celebrate Virginia, proposed ordinance 018-11. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Board members, have the computer, please. As the chairman said, this is a minor proffer amendment for a project known as Silver Collection Apartments in Celebrate Virginia. There's two properties involved that have these proffers, parcels 44W-2A and 44W-2B. The total site area is a little less than 25 acres. And the applicant is Silver Company, he's represented by Chris Hornung, and also Mr. Stewart. This is the zoning map of the area. The parcels are highlighted in red. As you can see from the zoning map, the purple color is the recreational business campus zoning category. Immediately across the street, there are light industrially zoned properties, which are generally vacant land as well as a flex office space. This project is part of a larger development for a mixed-use community. This is an aerial photograph that shows the overall site as it was under construction. There's a, two areas of apartment units, one to the north and one to the south, with a stormwater management facility in the center, and also a clubhouse in the center portion of the project. Some zoning history, the property had received zoning changes since 1970, initially for M2-heavy industrial. It was considered to be part of an industrial park. In the early 2000s, it was incorporated into the Celebrate Virginia North Project, and was later zoned recreational business campus from the M2 zoning category to facilitate apartments for a training facility in the nearby vicinity. Due to economic conditions, that proposal was modified to allow for market-rate apartments, and also was expanded to include additional properties for a total 278 apartment units. The site plan for the apartments were approved last year. They have been actively under construction, and they're in the process of seeking occupancy permits for those apartments. This is the concept plan in more detail that shows each one of the proposed buildings and the layout with the stormwater management pond in the middle, plus other stormwater management facilities. These are the architectural renderings that were provided with the application in addition to the generalized development plan. A lot of the discussion at that time was focused on ensuring that this be a quality development and have a lot of amenities that be desirable for the community. We have some photographs from the property to show you the applicant's intent on keeping up with the high-quality standards for the project. As you can see, they have a significant clubhouse and pool. And these are some of the interior pictures from the clubhouse itself. And these are some interior photos of one of the units within the project. The bottom image is really the center of our discussion for tonight. The current proffers stipulate that there be washers and dryers within the, each proposed dwelling unit. And as such, when we're reviewing those applications for occupancy permits, from the zoning standpoint, we believe that there needs to be washers and dryers within each individual unit. The applicant has looked at having a third-party provider provide the apartments with the washers and dryers, because they're also finding that a number of their prospective tenants want to bring their own washer and dryers into the units. And that's what's caused the need for the proffer amendment. Specifically for the amendment, the, as I mentioned, it says that all units shall have washers and dryers in them. And it's tied to the occupancy permit. And typically, what we do is try to grant occupancy permits for entire buildings, which has caused a problematic situation, rather than individual units getting occupancy permits. Again, I mentioned about the tenants wanting to bring their own units, and also the third-party vendor. This would give the tenants options to own their own washers and dryers and/or lease them. Regarding the findings, staff believes that the amendment would not degrade the desired high quality of development for this project. The amendment does not change the intensity or use of the development or the outward physical features of the project. And it would allow staff to have reliable compliance with the proffers. Because these are zoning restrictions that run with the property. Typically, an apartment building is going to last 30 to 50 years. So anytime there comes in for a building permit to do a renovation, we would be reviewing it for compliance with the proffers and have to determine whether or not it's complying by verifying that there's a washer and dryer in the unit. Again, the applicant is proposing that the proffers be amended to not specify that a washer and dryer be there, but the actual hookups be available. So that gives the tenant an option to provide their own washers and dryers. Also, in the case of, this project is, proffered as multi-family dwelling units, but doesn't specify whether they're apartments or condos. Currently, they are apartments, but could convert to condos in the future. And it also would have some effect on the future owners if they did condoize the project. Staff is supportive of the proposed minor amendment. The Planning Commission, however, recommended denial in their February meeting. They had some concerns about the marketing for the project in relation to what brochures that they discovered when they visited the property, which said there will be washers and dryers in the units, which this amendment is a little bit variance from that. Also, they asked staff to look at the newer apartment complexes that have been built in the Fredericksburg region, and asked us to take a look at whether they had washers and dryers. And they said they indeed did have those types of units within the apartments and people rent them. Also, there was a request to look at some national studies regarding apartments and desired amenities. And washers and dryers are indeed a very highly-desired amenity for apartment dwellings. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board members may have.
Ms. Mauer.
Okay, so the actual language of the amendment says, "In no event shall an occupied unit be without a washer or a dryer." So if you give the occupancy permit prior to the washer and dryer being installed, are you making a second visit out there to ensure that the, whether or not the tenant brings a washer and dryer, or they lease a washer and dryer? How are you going to ensure compliance with this amended language?
Well, the amended language would basically say they don't have to have them in there on the site at the time. So we wouldn't normally be going back into occupied residence. From a zoning perspective, we normally don't do that.
But the language in the amendment, second to the last sentence, says, "In no event shall an occupied unit be without a washer or a dryer." So in order for the county to ensure compliance with that proffer, you would have to go into an occupied dwelling?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's not a normal practice, so we'd have to adjust to that in some form or fashion.
Okay. And so are they going to pay extra because we now have to staff time to make a second visit?
Right now, we don't have a specific process for that because our fees are tied to the occupancy permit, not a follow-up inspection.
So there's no way to ensure compliance unless they're going into an occupied dwelling?
Yes. And if we add a complaint and the tenant let us in, we could see that there was no washer and dryer provided.
Got it. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Harvey? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board supervisors. My name is Chris Hornung. I'm Vice President of Planning and Engineering for the Silver Companies. I think Jeff did a pretty good job of explaining the request. In our mind, this is a timing issue. That's why we asked the proffers to state, "All units shall have them regardless." We just want to give our renters an option to bring their own if they would like. We're finding that up to 50% of our residents in our communities, this is not our only community, do bring their own, primarily because our community is geared towards young professionals and empty nesters. And many of those are moving into, or downsizing into apartments, particularly ours. We think this is the nicest complex you have in the county. And many of them want to bring their own. If we're required to have them at occupancy permit, we basically have to buy them and tell everyone, "You cannot bring your own. You either have to sell it or store it." What we had proposed to staff, in answer to your question, Ms. Baumke, is we're happy to have, I'm sorry, I got Mauer, and it's your name sitting right there. How foolish of me, sorry, was that we're happy to have a form with every rental that basically the tenant has to sign that says whether or not they're bringing their own, or if they're going to lease one from the community and have one provided by the community. We're happy to do that and have those on file. We're happy to send them in monthly so that the staff does not have to come out to verify that. It doesn't behoove us, when we call ourselves the nicest community in the county, not to have washers and dryers in the unit. So we're not, there's no intention to provide units without washers and dryers to people. We think we have the highest rents as a result of having the nicest community in the county. And those folks do expect to have a washer and dryer in there. So it would be self-defeating to not provide those in the future. We just want to be able to have the option. And the way it's currently set up, by requiring it at the time of occupancy, we cannot provide that option. And that's really the motivating factor behind this. So we feel that the proffer was intended to convey quality, to make sure there was no central laundry, that it would be a high-end community. We think we've achieved that. And we're just asking for assistance to help with this timing issue that we have. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hornung?
So I was reading through the Planning Commission minutes, and did you guys already print all of your advertising that says washer and dryer hookups and not washer and dryers in the units?
The folks who do the marketing for projects are not always the folks who write proffers. When we read the proffers, when we designed this proffer, that "All units shall have washers and dryers," candidly, it wasn't written real well. It was our intention, just like with all our communities, that all of them will have washers and dryers, either supplied by the tenant or supplied by the community. I believe that the, during the Planning Commission meeting, one of the members identified a line item that says washer and dryer hookups provided. That was not correctly written. It should have been more geared towards, "You can bring your own, or we can supply one." But that's the program. That's the program we've had. So I don't think that was, you know, a smoking gun, that there was some conspiracy going on, that we were not proposing to do it. I think it was, the proffer was not written well, and the marketing literature was not conveyed, we did not convey correctly the situation in that marketing document. But it is the program we've been using, and that we do propose, we can't propose now because we need this proffer amendment, but that we intend to propose to all future residents if this gets passed.
So what if they don't bring their own washer and dryer, nor do they opt to pay the leasing fee for the washer and dryer?
The only way that could happen is for someone to state they're bringing their own and then not bring their own.
Okay.
Because we will require them to do one or the other. They either have to tell us they are bringing their own.
So you will inspect an occupied unit?
Well, we do go in for periodic inspections, so that is part of the program. And we can do that. We can confirm that folks will have washers and dryers. I think, you know, in this day and age, when the spaces are there, I don't know that you're going to have a whole lot of people who instead decide to, you know, take their laundry to a laundromat. But we do those inspections. And as part of what I brought up earlier about providing documentation with each unit or each rental, if the county wants to keep track of that, we can also do, during our inspections, confirmation that the washers and dryers are there.
Mr. Cohen?
Just for clarification, so the applicant, the people who want to rent the apartment have a choice. Either they bring their own and they get a lower rent, or they have a higher rent because you're supplying the washer and dryer.
That's correct. What we do is, we do it through a third-party company because the company also does all of the maintenance. And this is very common. The company we use has over 500 apartment communities, and they've been in business for over 40 years. And basically, they provide all of the service so that the communities do not have to provide a mechanic or anyone who's specializing in washers and dryers on site. So they do supply them. The way it works is, there is a base rent amount, and if you have your own washer dryer, that's what you pay. If you want to have one, I think it goes up by about $30 a month, is all it is.
So, you know, I know you've developed other apartments. You showed us the one down by the, in Mass upon X, by the hospital. Did that one have a similar situation to what you're experiencing here?
We didn't proffer washers and dryers in that one, but it's the same, it's the same system. We didn't run into the problem because, or this issue, because we, it wasn't included in the proffers. So it wasn't being reviewed at occupancy permit. So when the inspector went in and there was no washer dryer there, it wasn't raised as a, you know, a zoning violation or something along those lines.
So why, in your opinion, what do you think was the primary reason the Planning Commission voted, denied your amendment?
I believe we may have done a poor job explaining it. I was not present at that meeting. I had, a meeting I was chairing at the City of Fredericksburg, and we sent along the gentleman who's in charge of our projects, who does all of the, oversees all of our apartment communities. And he's never gone to a public meeting before. And we did talk to a couple of planning officials beforehand. We didn't think it was going to be a major issue, but there was information presented at the hearing that, on this marketing document that listed hookups, that from what I understand, turned the majority of the Planning Commission's opinion, that there was something sneaky going on, is the way I interpreted it.
Okay, that's helpful. All right, Mr. Cavalier?
Chris, what's the liability issue if the people bring their own washer dryer? And let's say there's a problem, the washer floods and drips down into the unit below, becomes the big mess. How do you handle that versus one of your rented units?
It's all part of the insurance. I mean, obviously, if someone has a leaking washer, it's not a willful act of vandalism or something like that, that they're, they've intentionally done something. So it would be covered by the community's insurance. Most of what we're finding is people are bringing, they're actually bringing nicer ones that are typically supplied. So, you know, if someone has a special washer and dryer they bought and spent, you know, $1,000 a piece on, those are the ones they're bringing. So we're not, we're not really getting older, sort of beat-up units. We're actually getting newer units that are being brought by residents.
So these aren't the type of washer dryer units in apartments that are like stackable in a closet type of situation?
The units are set up as side-by-sides. So that, you know, if someone had a stackable one, it may fit in there if that's what they wanted to put in, but I haven't.
But you don't put stackable ones in the ones you're doing now?
No, sir.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Thank you, Mr. Hornung. Okay, at this point in time, we'll open the public Okay, at this point in time, we'll open the public hearing. Would anyone in the board chambers like to address the board?
This is the most ludicrous request I have ever seen. We have traveled all over the world in temporary quarters, off, living off-base, later on, the kids and I selling our home, moving into apartment for me for a promotion. We did not bring our washer and dryer from California to Texas, just washer and dryer. I've never heard anything so ludicrous, again to repeat, as this. This is stupid as heck. You just don't, a young couple just starting out, getting married, they move into an apartment, they don't have a washer and dryer to bring with them. This, I admire the planning commission for doing the right thing. It'll be interesting to see if you do the right thing. If I were Silver Company, I'd be embarrassed by this. They mentioned, I read the complete package, I just have the cover here, but where they got some of those stats are unbelievable. I don't know where they got them, but they're not realistic. People do not bring their washer and dryer when they move, just their washer and dryer with them when they move. And that's all I can say. This is so dumb. It should have never, well, the planning commission did the right thing. That's it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Now I understand what the zoning department's supposed to do when they come to apartments. Now, if you allow someone to do their own washer and dryer, and they come from overseas, and they bring some kind of disease with it, now it's in the entire building, and I can give you a good reference, Moxie will do pest control for you. I was at the planning commission meeting. It was a lovely day, February 14th, Valentine's Day, just beautiful way to decline things. And you hear that there's a necessity for electrical plumbing and venting, and you're all worried about staff coming in twice for occupancy permit, when if you just don't proffer it, you just simply give them all the same washer and dryer, and they can get a pod and maybe store it somewhere, there are one that's there. You're also stereotyping this young generation that's going to come to apartments, the nicest complex in the county. My furnished apartment is the nicest apartment in the county. Look it up, it's on military by owner. It's the one without public water and sewer. You have stormwater management issues in this community. And if you don't know how to market, you know, you now have experience on marketing. So I love to hear excuses. It's just like I love to hear about things, you all say you have problems. I keep telling you, this is an opportunity to set things up. Now, I had an old dryer that lasted thirty years in an apartment, and finally in 2014, the tenant who went through the inspection said, "Hey, it makes noise." So I went and bought a new one. So that's what the issue is here. You have no way to make them be in compliance, so we have standardized washers and dryers. Not, this ain't like BYOB, you know, B-Y-O-B, I guess, bring your own W, B-O-Y-O-W. Or do a BYOD, bring your own dryer. And I'm telling you, the insect problem is the real problem of bringing in something else. That's the issue. I mean, opportunity.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to the, would the applicant like to rebut? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, this is in the Hartwood District. I'll bring this to Mr. Snelling.
I have a question for the applicant. I should have asked earlier, but I'll ask now. I've visited those apartments, they're very high-end. I don't, I think it rents in the seventeen to eighteen-hundred range, somewhere in there. If you have someone come in today under the current rules, and you have to provide a washer and dryer, you're charging them, right?
Today, yes, it's added to.
To the rent.
That's correct. And we've had to, the ones that are there, we've had to buy washers and dryers for those units.
And you've raised their rent?
Yes, sir.
To cover that?
Yes, sir.
So if I am a young professional, or a young married couple, or whatever, and I have my own washer and dryer, shame on me, because I am going to have to have, use yours, right?
Yes, sir.
And pay the extra thirty bucks?
That's correct.
So to me, this is a choice thing, because, thank you, Mr. Hornig, for asking my question.
Just to your point, whether you, everything in an apartment community, the tenants ultimately pay for, whatever that is.
Correct.
So if they're all supplied, then everyone's rent, as to your point, everyone's rent would be higher.
But we're actually giving some people that have their own the option not to pay that extra thirty dollars.
That was the intent, yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, to one comment about bringing in bugs, I mean, I don't know about that, but, you know, people bring their furniture with them. I don't see a difference there. Anyway, I've looked at this, I looked at the planning commission meeting, it was a, to say, to say the least, it was a fiasco, not the fault of the planning commission, but by the individual from the Silver Company that made the presentation. Kind of felt sorry for them, really. They just tied him up in knots. And I've done some more studying on it, and in my opinion, I believe we do need to grant this request, because the key here is there are going to be certain renters that will bring their own washer and dryer. And if those people do, under the current rule, they're going to have to put it in storage or sell it. It's going away, and their rent's going up, and they're going to have to, their rent's going up thirty dollars on top of that. So in that, for that reason, I will motion to approve the proffer amendment.
Okay, so motion and a second, any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And just to give a little bit of history, because I was on the planning commission, when this first came up about doing, at that point, can I, I'm not sure if it's allowed to mention what government agency was thinking of doing a training facility down there. We had a great deal of consternation about what is going to happen should that contract fail in a year or two or three, and that was one of the first meetings I was on, on the planning, and I kept asking, so what type of amenities are you doing? What type of countertops are they going to be? What type of washers, dryers, dishwashers, et cetera, so that the people in that area know what type of apartment they would end up with should the government contract fail? As it turned out, sequester hit, they didn't get the government contract, they came back in for apartments, and I thought it was a very nice gesture on their part. They said, "Look, we are proffering this type of countertops, these type of equipment, these are type of amenities, so that the people in the area know this is a high-end project." Mr. Harvey, in his, probably as most emphatic as I see, have ever seen him, said, "They can't really proffer that because we can't check it. We don't have the process to verify this." And their response was, "Look, we're not doing this so that it gets checked. We're doing this so that the neighbors down in that area, and there are some rather nice housing down in that area, know what type of amenities and what type of facility is being put in here." And lo and behold, you find out that, oh, gosh, we could check it by this occupancy permit issue. So the whole point of them proffering anything and the specificity on it was to show the neighbors that this was going to be a high-end unit, which it has turned out to be a high-end project. Lastly, about people moving in, and we've lived in apartments a good number of years until I was fortunate enough to get a house in Stafford. And so I understand when we're at a certain level, the washers and dryers were there. I also have many friends and some family that were military, and when they moved, they brought their washers and dryers with them. And so this gives them an option. So if they were like my family was and didn't have a washer and dryer, then we would just pay a rent that included it, and if they do have one, they're not paying that rent, they're paying thirty dollars less, and they can use their own instead of trying to figure out what they're going to do with it. Some of the realtors I've bumped into, including one that sits at our front desk out here, on days that we have meetings, said, "Oh, yeah, that's what we are getting now. Our people who are particularly military, particularly newer generation, already have things like washers and dryers, and they want the flexibility." So to me, as Mr. Snelling said, they're going to get a washer and dryer, and it's either going to be at the expense of the rent, or they already have one, which they, was at their own expense. So either way, they're paying for it, and I just think it gives a little bit of flexibility, and this is a high-end proposition by what they have proffered and actually delivered. Thank you.
Ms. Mauer? While we're getting into long conversations about washers and dryers, but for me, there's a couple of things. Number one, I read through all the planning commission meeting minutes, I've read through all of the research that staff has provided, and I want to thank you. This will be the only apartment complex, high-end apartment complex, that won't include a washer and dryer. That gives me pause. In addition to that, you know, rents aren't necessarily determined by, by what's in the unit, but by market forces. And, and so whether or not you're going to charge a certain level, it's not going to be, you're not going to charge thirty extra for the washer and dryer, it sounds like you're going to do it anyway. But, but rents are based upon market forces, and, and so this idea that somebody's going to save thirty dollars, I'm not certain I'm ready to press the "I believe" button on that one. But the biggest issue I have with this is, is process. And so in the proffer amendment, it says, "In no event shall an occupied unit be without a washer or dryer," which means that in order for us to ensure that we are complying with something that we're approving, that we're making a second visit at taxpayer expense in order to go into an occupied unit, which I have serious concern with, to verify that this washer and dryer is in there. And that's the way this, this particular proffer amendment is written, and so either A, we don't enforce the proffer, which I have serious pause on that, or B, we're going into occupied units at extra expense on the taxpayer to do verification, and I can't agree with that either. And so, so when I look at this, I'm not exactly sure why, if you look at the fact that a washer and dryer, putting one into a unit, is roughly going to cost you somewhere between six hundred to a thousand dollars per unit, I think it's more a cost thing than it is we want to give people options, because if you look at all of the research that has been provided by staff, that this is the number-one amenity that people are looking for, a washer and dryer provided, not a washer and dryer hookup, but a washer and dryer provided in high-end units. So I'm, I'm not going to support this for those reasons, and thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to make a comment? All right, we have a motion and a second. So if there's no more discussion, cast your vote. Tally the vote. The motion passes four to two with one absent. Thank you. Moving along to item number twenty-two. Consider an amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding lot size and building setbacks for retirement housing in the recreational business campus. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This public hearing is to consider ordinance O-18-05, which would amend the zoning code specific to the recreational business campus zoning category. The recreational business campus zoning category allows retirement housing in that zoning category and has built out with the Del Webb Celebrate Virginia Project. In 2012, the county amended its cluster regulations to repeal the regulations and start over. As part of those cluster regulations, there was a table 5.1, which set up the lot sizes and setback standards for cluster developments in the R2 zoning category plus other zoning categories. The recreational business campus zoning standards cross-referenced that table that was in the zoning code at the time. Unfortunately, when that repeal occurred, that table was eliminated, and therefore we're in a situation now, from an administrative standpoint, that there are no set, existing setback standards or lot size standards. The Celebrate Virginia Project has already been approved based on prior plans, so it's never really been an issue until recently, when it was brought to our attention that those standards no longer exist. So this proposed amendment would reinstate a lot size and setback standards for the RBC zoning category for retirement housing, plus it restructures table 3.1 to be more effective and more easily understood. The staff and planning commission recommend adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Harvey? Ms. Shelton?
Mr. Harvey, I was missing R5. Last year, we brought in R5 for senior housing for over fifty-five, I thought, and so I saw that R2 and R3 were talking about senior housing, but wouldn't R5 be in here as well?
Ms. Shelton, the R5 zone did not cross-reference this table, so it has its own standards for setbacks in lot sizes.
All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Snellings?
Now, if we pass this, it doesn't increase their density, they can't go in and build more houses and celebrate for Del Webb, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harvey. Okay, at this point in time, we'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the board on this item? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing, bring this back to the board. Do I have a motion?
A move for approval, Madam Chair.
All right, any discussion? All right, with that, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes six to zero with one absent. With that, the board has no other business. The meeting for tonight is adjourned.